Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, February 26, 2019 at 6:00 PM. First, we'll have an invocation by Pastor Andrew Cave from the Lamb of God Lutheran Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance with the Sea Scouts.
The Apostle Paul writes, "First of all, then, I urge that supplications, prayers, intercessions, and thanksgivings be made for all people, for kings and all who are in high positions, that we may lead a peaceful and quiet life, godly and dignified in every way. Let us pray. Oh Lord, you have established earthly authorities for our good, so that peace and justice may be done according to your will. We pray for all who exercise this authority, asking you to grant them a spirit of wisdom and understanding, so that all we say and do may be according to your good and gracious will. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen."
Please rise and uncover for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And if the Sea Scouts would like to introduce themselves and share a little bit about their club with us?
I'm Emily Epler, and I'm the storekeeper of the Sea Scouts.
Hey, my name is Ryan Robinson. I am the yeoman and the secretary for the Sea Scouts.
Hello, I am Maverick Scotto. I am the crew leader for the Sea Scouts.
I'm Seth Crick, and I'm the assistant crew leader for the Sea Scouts.
Hi, my name is Faith Davis, and I am the bosom's mate of Lake Havasu Sea Scouts. We are a co-ed water-based program of the Boy Scouts, and we have been in Lake Havasu for seven years. Some of the activities we participate in includes boating, sailing, scuba diving, participating in underwater cleanups, and we do everything in, on, and under the water. The Sea Scouts also love to help out our community with Desert Storm, the Balloon Festival, Delbert Days Rodeo, the Pyrotechnics Weekend, and more. We also hold the Aquatic Merit Badge Weekend to give Boy Scouts more opportunities. We also fundraise for our travels, for example, the Long Beach Regatta, Safety at Sea, and the San Diego Coast Guard Base. We also went to the Channel Islands for scuba diving and a long cruise, which we were featured in not only the Boys Life Magazine, which will come out soon, but the Dive Training Magazine. We are also planning to going to Philmont in the summer of 2020 to go horseback riding. Lance Yurk, one of our Sea Scouts, is almost finished with his Eagle project of resigning the Bridgewater Channel, and here's an example of the sign. "The Sea Scouts and Boy Scouts were out there on Sunday, removing the old signs and repainting the stands. They will be installing the new signs this week. Thank you for your time. We were honored to be here today, and if anybody has any questions, we will be honored to answer them." We would also like to give a special mention to our mayor for all of his support.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us today. We appreciate it. Do any members of the council have any questions for the Sea Scouts? Well, thank you for joining us. We appreciate it. All right, the next item on... Oh, excuse me. All right, the next item on the agenda is the roll call. The city clerk would like to call.
Councilmembers Cal Sheehy.
Here.
David Lane.
Here.
Jenny Koch.
Here.
Gordon Grove.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Donna McCoy.
Here.
Jim Dolan.
Here. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Call to the Public. This is where citizens have the opportunity to address the city council on issues within the jurisdiction of the city. Your comments must be limited to five minutes or less. If you wish to address an item that's already on today's agenda, we ask that you address that when that item is announced. That way, we can have a two-way conversation. At the conclusion of the open Call to the Public, individual members of the council may give staff direction or address any criticism that might have come in that. There is a light indicator on the podium. Green means you have time left, yellow means you have one minute left, and red means that the five minutes is up. So with that being said, does anyone want to address the city council at the Call to the Public? When you get to the podium, please just state your name for the city clerk.
Walter Spar. On January 28th, I sent a email to all the council members and the mayor regarding a element that I termed to be a violation of zoning code. And so I'm here to present the problem, but I want to finish with a solution. I don't want to give you the problem with no solution. During the course of discussion on this, it came up that the zoning code was changed pursuant to the authority of the general plan. But page one of the general plan specifically states that this should not be confused with a zoning action, and the general plan does not change zoning. This problem broke down to whether service was made regarding the zoning change, where, you know, the city cannot change zoning without notifying the property owners. Okay, so Arizona Rev. Statute 9462.05, titled "Public Hearing Required," states in pertinent part, "In proceedings that are not initiated by the property owner involving rezoning of land, that change of zoning classification, notice by first-class service shall be sent to each real property owner." That was not accomplished. And I believe that that element is uncontroverted. Under Statute Arizona 946.05, titled Enforcement, the legislative body of a municipality has the authority to enforce zoning ordinance, prevent construction, reconstruction, alterations, repair, conversion, maintenance, and use; prevent the occupancy of any such building or structure or land; prevent all illegal act, conduct, business, or use of the premises. On February 8th, I presented a notice and demand to the Building Department, and I gave the Building Department until February 14th to respond to my notice. In this notice, it states, "Current zoning is identified as light industrial, formerly M-1P. The property was not posted indicating a zone change from M-1P to light industrial." I reviewed the current law, the last one that passed, where it changed M-1P to light industrial. And I viewed it from a quantum analysis viewpoint, and I found that this code really has a lot of problems. For instance, there's a lot of them. I'm just going to give you one. I don't want to take a lot of time. The title of this one section for light industrial is "Public Institutional Uses." In the courtroom, a judge... I'm going to read this to you the way a judge would interpret it. "The city can provide clubs, private meeting rooms, daycare centers..." Now, these are owned by the city. So the city would own a daycare center. The city would own a funeral home, a mortuary, a golf course, and a hospital. Because one word is missing out of this, it prohibits any citizen from using his own property for these designated purposes. And the word is "general." The word "public" does not mean the population, the people. In law, it means... The word "public" stands for government. When you're talking about the people, you've got to have the word "general," for the general population, the general public. Because that's missing, that section of law will be... is subject to interpretation. There's too many areas of interpretation in this code. So my solution is... I'm...
You can continue.
Can I finish the solution?
Yes.
It's very short. If the council would establish a commission to review this document and go over it and clean it up, it can be repaired, but it's going to take a lot of work. And I suggest you put two staff members on it, two building contractors, a couple of attorneys, one or two council members, and two or three members from the population. It can be fixed. And an issue like this came up 25 years ago with me, and I wanted to take it to court. The two top-level people in the Building Department, they were fired over it. The zoning authority on this, the zoning administrator, is kind of in the middle of this. Don't fire him. He's a nice guy. Okay? This is not his problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Would anyone else like to address the city council in the Call to the Public? Please state your name for the city clerk.
My name's Bonnie.
And Bonnie, if you could just get a little bit closer to the microphone so people at home can hear you. Thank you.
Hi, home. I have a concern that was brought to me by people who are walking around in the downtown area, sometimes at night, sometimes during the day. The crosswalks... There are crosswalks there. People are allowed to walk in the streets during the construction. During the daytime, traffic is insane, and they have no respect for people crossing the street. And at nighttime, it's a little more... There's less traffic, so you don't have to worry about it. I just wanted to offer a simple solution, you know, problem-solution. I love that plan. During the daytime, please turn the lights back to regular stoplights, and then at night, make them the stop signs again, the flashing lights. Simple solution. Also, the people don't know how to drive four-way stops with stoplights. They drive a lot of us crazy, for the record.
Thank you.
Simple solution.
Thank you, Bonnie. And could you also just state your last name for the clerk?
Toy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the city council at the Call to the Public? Seeing none, we'll close the Call to the Public. The next item on the agenda is our Consent Agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Dolan.
I just want to make a clarification. There's a ground lease agreement in the Consent Agenda referencing Campbell Cove Investments. I just wanted to clarify, that's not my business. I don't have any financial interest in that business. It's a storage facility down the street from us, so...
Thank you.
Mayor.
Councilmember Koch.
Motion?
Yes.
I move that we approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. The next item is Item 7, Correspondence, Communications, Petitions, Announcements, and the City Manager Report. 7.1, Announce Vacancies on the Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, there are a number of vacancies on the Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Airport Advisory Board, one regular pilot member, one alternate non-pilot member. Board of Adjustment, three regular members, three alternate members. And the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, one regular member. Citizens interested can pick up a packet at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 7.2 is our City Managers' Report. Mr. Knutson?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to start off tonight's report with a recognition of the swift response from Public Works Department over the weekend. We received a thank you from the Sunrise Rotary Club, and we thanked and reimbursed the city for coming to their rescue when their generator, which was providing power for music to their weekend Brats and Brew event, died. The city staff provided a generator within the hour, and they were able to continue with their successful event. And like to also extend a thank you to the Sunrise Rotary Club. They donated installed an electrical box at Pima Wash for the events on McCulloch and Quirio. The box is located in the northeast corner of the Quirio event space and will provide power for the area as well as future events. So, thank you. We have two new bocce ball courts that were constructed to augment the existing courts that are temporarily out of commission while the restrooms are being repaired at Rotary Park. As shown in the picture, the new courts are getting good use and will be a great addition next to the existing courts. So these courts are out next to the beach and in the sun, and we've heard a lot of great response from the players out there. Overall, the health of our local economy continues to grow. Fiscal year-to-date, January 29 sales tax collections are 6.5% above budget and 11% above the prior year. We're seeing the largest areas of growth are continuing to be in construction, retail, restaurant, and bar. Sales tax revenues for January exceeded the prior year's collections by 3.1%, but the January collections were 1% below budget. But again, overall, we're in a pretty good shape. Last year at this time, our reported January retail sales tax collections, they decreased 0.7% from the prior year. Year-to-date retail tax collections increased 5.3% from just last year. Broken down into categories, the numbers you're seeing here are January 2018 numbers versus January 2019 numbers. And you'll see that we saw decreases in retail sales tax collections for motor vehicle and parts, as well as the home furnishings. So we see the red indicates the decline in numbers from January to January, but we did see increases in the other categories that you see there, most notably in online sales and home-based businesses, which is identified as non-store in the bottom-left-hand corner, an increase of 34%. The next coffee with the mayor and city manager will be this week. It'll be Friday, March 1st, with a meeting at Fire Station Number 2, which is located at 2065 Kiowa Boulevard from 8:30 AM. And then we'll be... We'll continue that event until about 10:00 AM. It's open to the public, and all residents are encouraged to attend and hear information, presentations, discussions, and express any issues, concerns, or questions they might have about the city. Teen Break is back again this year. Sign-ups are still open at the Aquatic Center. The cost is $40 per participant, and the event will run for three days, March 12th to March 14th. And this is for participants currently enrolled in 6th through 12th grades. The event will include food and drink for all three days. There's a flight simulator, a gaming trailer, cow-tongue football. There's a mud pit, three-on-three basketball and volleyball competitions, relays, beach-and-water games, water slide, prizes, and a music by DJ Havik will be at the event. So lots of fun for the teenagers in the community. At the same time, Spring Break Youth Camp for children will be for kindergarten through 6th grade. It'll be held at Starline Elementary School, and it'll be for the full week from March 11th through March 15th. That starts at 7:30 in the morning and goes till 5:30 in the evening. The cost for this event is the same. It's $40 for the first child, and then $31 for each additional child from the same family. And participants are asked to bring their own lunch. Registration is now open. Space is limited, so please stop by the Aquatic Center now and reserve space. Mayor and Council, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Knutson? Thank you. Moving on to our Public Hearings, Section 8, 8.1, Adopt Resolution Number 19-3285, Appointing Members to the Lake Havasu City Board of Adjustment. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, the city received one application requesting consideration for appointment as a regular member to the Board of Adjustment. This appointment is needed to fill a regular member vacancy with a term ending June 30th, 2020. Ms. Robin Hill's application was provided to you in the packet, and she is here today to make a brief presentation to the council and answer any questions.
Thank you. Mrs. Hill?
I'd like to start by thanking the council members and Mayor Sheehy for your consideration of my application to serve on the Board of Adjustment for Lake Havasu City. Just to give you a little background about how I got here, my husband Jim and I started coming to Havasu, like a lot of people, as typical SoCal weekenders. Like most everybody who comes out here, we really enjoy boating and off-roading and just the fun-friendly atmosphere that's here in general. And in 2009, we took the plunge and bought a home, and from there, it took about five minutes for us to decide to move out here full-time. We had always wanted to own our own business, and we started Perfect Circle Masonry because it didn't take long for us to realize that this little city that we moved to wasn't going to be the same little city for very long. And as the financial report testifies to, construction was a great area to get into. We feel like we made the right decision. Business is good. We have happy customers, and we're proud of the work that we do here. As much as I take pride in being able to contribute to the community as a local business owner, I think it's also important for people like me who fell in love with Havasu enough to make it our home, to be invested and actively involved in what this city looks like in the future. And that's the reason I'd like to sort of get my feet wet with the Board of Adjustment and see where it goes from there and be involved in the community planning and development area. I look forward to any opportunity, really, to work with people who care about what happens here in Havasu as much as I do. Thank you again, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council or Mayor Sheehy may have. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. Hill? No, well, thank you very much.
You make it easy.
Yes, thank you for addressing us. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing. I will open up the public hearing. Does anyone want to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Lane.
Motion?
Yes.
I move to adopt Resolution 19-3285, appointing Robin Hill as a regular member to the Board of Adjustment with a term ending June 30th, 2020.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Congratulations, and thank you so much for volunteering. We appreciate it. Item 8.2, Adopt Ordinance Number 19-1213, Amending Lake Havasu City Code Chapter 13.28 to Make Necessary Changes Regarding Lot Ties, Lot Alterations, and Lot Splits. Mr. Smelling?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item was introduced to you at your last meeting. It is an amendment to the subdivision code, Section 1328, and basically creates one process and procedure for all lot splits, lot ties, and lot alterations. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Do any members of the council have any questions? All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Mayor? Councilmember Dolan?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to adopt Ordinance Number 19-1213, Amending Lake Havasu City Code, Chapter 13.28, to make necessary changes to Chapter 13.28 regarding lot ties, lot alterations, and lot splits.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right, Item 8.3, Approve Consulting Agreement from Albert, Holler, and Associates to Provide Sales Tax Desk Review Audits. Ms. Olson?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The item before you is staff requesting you to approve the consulting agreement with Albert Holler and Associates to provide sales tax desk review audits. This is just to ensure that businesses are complying with the city tax code and reporting and submitting the proper paperwork and remitting the proper amounts. It'll be a standard desk audit. Files and reports on hand will be reviewed with any applicable documentation that we may request of the business. Business owners will be notified for any additional questions, updates, or changes in the filing that might need to be made. At the end of the audit, at the audit closing, the tax laws and appeal rights will be explained to the taxpayer. They'll be provided with all the information necessary to report correctly in the future, and of course confidentiality of all taxpayer information will be strictly maintained. The costs that we are estimating for the consulting agreement for fiscal year 1819, the remainder of this fiscal year is around $16,000, at $4,000 a month, and the cost for fiscal year 1920 estimated, assuming budget approval, would be approximately $60,000. With that, we estimate that there'll be at least a minimum of $130,000 in additional ongoing revenue from the corrections that are made in the new reporting. And with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. Olson?
If I might, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grove?
Could I ask, Ms. Olson, do you have a sense of the changes that have taken place on a year-over-year basis?
A sense of...
Well, you're projecting there'll be, if I heard you correctly, an additional $100 and... What was it?
$130,000.
That's what I thought, $130,000. And what was that in the years previously? Why do you make this projection? I'm just curious.
It's just an estimate based upon the trend that results from these types of audits. We almost always find that there's somebody who's perhaps not reporting completely correctly or maybe under-reporting and under-remitting. And so, on the average, with the number of businesses that we have, with the gross receipts that we show on file now, we estimate that we'll probably have additional revenue of $130,000. It could be more. We don't think it'll be less, if any less, but we don't want to overestimate on the revenue side.
So this is a statistical mean. Basically, you're doing a trend line analysis year-over-year. How many years are we looking at in that trend line?
Like, five years.
It's a five-year analysis. With the $130,000, what would a percentage gain year-over-year be on that roughly?
That I don't have. I can get that to you, though.
Is it going up or is it going down? So theoretically, we do this every year. It should be... There should be less variance in this as our people become more accurate.
We don't do it every year, but, you know, should we, then? We imagine that there'd probably be an increase of 3% to 5%. Could be.
And finally, do you have a sense of what the burden might be on the business owners, of how much time it might take them roughly to go through the process?
Our estimate is that it shouldn't be burdensome to the taxpayer because it'll be documentation that they already have at their business. We're just... We will just compare the records that we have and perhaps follow up with the taxpayer to just show us, you know, how they came to the numbers that they reported that we're auditing. So it should be information they have right at hand. There shouldn't be any difficulty with that.
Are there any additional questions from the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Vice Mayor Lane.
Motion?
Yes.
I move to approve the consulting agreement with Albert Holler and Associates for auditing services in fiscal year 201819 in the amount of up to 16,000. in the amount of up to $16,000 and an amount not to exceed $60,000 in fiscal year 2019-2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda are current events. Do any members of the council have any council committee reports? All right, I would like to welcome Tristan Bartels, who's joining us today. He is a student from Arizona State University here in Lake Havasu. He has joined myself and Councilmember Lynn during the agenda setting as we set the agenda for this council meeting, along with city staff. And now he's with us today to kind of see the whole process through from a local government perspective. So welcome, Tristan, and thank you for going through that process with us. We will now then move on to item 10, which is our final call to the public. Would anyone like to address the city council on any matter at the call to the public? Seeing none, we'll close the call to the public. Item 11 is future meetings. Our next meeting is Tuesday, March 12th, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. It's a regular meeting. And also on Tuesday, March 26th, 2019, at 6:00 p.m., a regular meeting. Are there any future agenda items from the council? All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion and a second. We are adjourned. Thank you.